All right. Time being seven o'clock. I've called the board of the Town of Fallujah Planning Board for our scheduled meeting on the 15th, 2022. All members present. On the agenda, we have appointments and hearings at 7:00 for River Street Associates at 115 River Street. At 7:15, we have a continuation of Kennedy-Kennedy camp at 416 Fleming Street. At 7:20, we have a continuation for Denzel de Souza for 416 R Fleming Street. At 7:25, a continuation of the Saint Aire Realty Trust Mandating 101 on 16th Street. At 7:30, we have R&amp;K LLC, 0314 Fleming Street. We have a bill for W.B. Mason. We have 15 minutes to approve for September 1st. We have correspondence, letters from other towns, and notices. Do you want to make a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, your honor.
So for 7:00, do you have anyone from River Street?
They just emailed and said they were just kind of running a few minutes late if somebody wanted to go ahead with them.
Just because we have 15 minutes, I think we can go on to bills and meeting minutes.
That's what I had to say.
You need a second. Let that motion hold for a second if you want.
Thank you. Very observant.
I was wondering who did, and I'm glad that you just said that nobody did. I'll make a motion to pay Planning Board bill for W.B. Mason, invoice number S-127339370 for office supplies in the amount of $27.45.
Ed, move. You got a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, is it better?
There's no line right there.
There's no spot for me, but that's okay. I'll just do this. Mark, I signed in your spot. Yeah, right. No, thanks.
The meeting minutes. Has anyone had a chance to look over for September 1st?
I took a quick look at it. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as from September 1st, 2022, as presented.
You want a second? All right. All in favor? I'm not actually voting on that.
We do have an extension mark for Kennedy-Kennedy for 60 days.
Yeah, I think we could do that as. Don't, I don't think anyone could get a representative to take care of that now.
He's here.
Oh, okay. All of us.
We went over.
Do you mind if we get this now or later?
Wait, did we go over that at the last meeting, or am I misremembering?
Um, I don't know if we.
I thought we did, but it might have been.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it was discussed yet because we already, we did the other extension. I'm not sure when that was.
10:04.
Right, so I just, because we were waiting for the owner to do the site plan.
Yeah, please. It needs 60 days. Yeah. So it's okay with you to extend? Okay.
All right. And I have a motion to accept the letter of mutual agreement for extension for 60 days for Kennedy-Kennedy camp.
I'm motioning.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I'm good.
We don't even have anything to discuss. Should we go through letters and stuff?
That was great. Didn't even hurt.
Yeah, all of us. I was getting, I didn't know if anyone was even going to be there. It wasn't necessary, but we appreciate it. I thought that everyone's rolling on that.
Excuse me, I mean, we.
This one has a spot. You're welcome.
Do you want to sign this? Do you want?
You're welcome. You want to sign this?
Yes.
What'd you say?
Remis Street.
How are you? Sorry about that.
All right. You need a minute to get yourself settled, but we're ready for you whenever.
Oh, all right. Okay. Don't need to cut much. What's going on, guys?
All right. Sliding through traffic.
That's it, man.
Yeah, I know. It's unbelievable. So, um, here we are. I don't know what to say other than we're happy to answer whatever questions you have. I guess that might be the way to direct the conversation, I think. I don't know. Whatever, whatever you want to discuss.
I was at conservation. They did plan, they did present the plan from the floor.
The original plan? Is it any different? Like, we discussed the last time, anything different, substantial change? Which was concerning to the board was.
I just checked as soon as I got here, and the plan of that turnaround that we were planning to have meeting was not on plan to be presented, and they presented the August 4 plan that we agreed to. That reflects the redness and the solar array and before the wetlands fence and, I'm sorry, the wetlands. Buffer building in it. So to me, it looked exactly the same. Would you guys represent the same?
Yeah, absolutely. And apologies that we weren't able to attend the last meeting. I believe it was the first that you guys talked about this. I think if we had been able to do that, we would have been able to confirm the same at that time, but we're happy to be here tonight and just got to confirm again that the August 4th plan that we presented, that I presented to you guys, is, has now been presented to Tom and everyone is on the same page about it.
The only other question I had was, you remember in the original one, we talked about the different fence gauges and whatnot, and then it was withdrawn. You know, you, I didn't know if that plan included the new fence or we threw it back to the old original one.
No, the way that went was, we talked about two different options. We then went down and talked to Jim about it. Jim expressed that in the nine gauge chain, chambering. And so we said, okay, Tom, we'll go with the nine gauge chambering.
So the plan showed that.
The plan says either or. It doesn't have the discretion of the authority having jurisdiction, but we confirmed with Jim that we're, who are yours, are doing the chambering, the nine gauge chambering.
I had expressed that, you guys, I did a little research on it with the government agency that you had made mention of, and I'm glad we'll act to the original proposal.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, what we, what we presented on the 4th of August is what we presented last, the other night, and that's the same plan, so our plan is now.
This plan we have in front of us does have a revision date of 8/4.
So maybe on this letter, we can just knock out this three here, so that would be the one, two, three, four, fifth line. I'll pass that through, see if that's what it means. Just cross it out in the initial. Maybe add nine gauge or something.
This was from September 13.
Can you remember that?
This is regarding having the either or language regarding the fence?
Yeah.
Kind of like memorializing. Sure.
You know what I mean? Just to make it clear.
This doesn't say either or. This says 4.5 gauge. It's not game fence around the solar ring. It doesn't say either or.
I think what Amy is proposing is writing the entire thing. As long as we support that, I believe you would have met all of the requirements.
It would be definitely not against the post.
Could revert back to the plan.
And we can just say not on page six.
And then at that point, they'll be able to finally move forward with the completion of their project?
I think if that's all we're waiting on, still kind of catching up on what the holdup was, but now I.
So does that have to be struck out also?
What is it?
It's the next paragraph.
Um.
We're going fencing, being within the Massachusetts state law.
Our meetings are 15 minutes apart, so we got to fill up the full 15 minutes.
So you should strike that also.
Well, maybe we should have to run that and follow that up.
It's, it's far, they've already received this, right? We have already approved it, right? We approved it with the condition that it had to meet any fence requirements. So if they're meeting the fence requirements, I don't see why they need anything at all. You already have our approval, correct?
I don't think that we have a decision letter from you guys memorializing.
It's all you.
Okay. Yeah, we never got the letter.
So there was a, my memory places, there was a vote, and then the decision letter was, was not issued to us.
Held up pending the burnerage on the fence. I believe that it's, we are going to redraft that and send it up to you. As far as I'm concerned, you're already approved. I think that the updated plan addresses the issue. I think that it's a simple redraft of the, except decision letter. Decision letter.
The decision letter is there.
Do you want to make those not.
In that little hole.
I think that's where.
That's the one you're talking about. If you feel that with a redraft, you know, that's fine, but it's been discussed, you know, if any substantial change would have to come back, so I think it's pretty clear for just.
Well, Jim, yeah, Jim's already said that the full apartment is going to require the chain of fence, and we've already said that's fine, so what we're trying to do is get the pot firm building.
Yeah. It's up to you, Jim. I just didn't think that it would be any significant time just to clean it up.
No, certainly. If it's a matter of a day or two, that's not going to.
It needs to go to the town court first anyway before he can have it, so that would be Monday, you know, at the earliest. Just get it.
Monday's hard, but it's not going to be.
If that seems something reasonable for you, if you don't mind, if you suggest like redraft that without this, we'll sign in the date of this, so you know what the changes.
Just your signature on the decision whether that's needed. I can have your stamp if you approve that and can use that.
Absolutely.
But it does need to go to the town court Monday before I issue it today.
If that sounds good to you, I think Monday, this will be resolved.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Does that sound good? All right. I don't think.
Have fun in traffic on the way back.
Thanks for clarifying.
Well, no. Thank you, Rob, for.
Thank you.
I'll revote on this.
What do you do? Because what you're missing is that there was a little bit of a hiccup, and we retracted the decision based on a plan, so we just need to revote it right now.
Okay. Right now, I would entertain a vote to approve the site plan modification change to the solar rating system.
What's the petition number?
It's, it's the plan August 4.
Just the plan.
I would entertain a motion.
Second.
I'm moving that motion.
For the, I now have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Jen. Thank you.
Good night.
I need to just slide it in.
Vote 7:20. We have Denzel de Souza for 416 R Fleming Street. Hang on.
Good. So we were in last week, a couple weeks ago, we told him to come back because we had to build the food. So we brought these, food, a little profit, and it was a little redundant, so we're going to talk to you about it.
So back in the lab, I'm the owner of the plaza. I was in front of, thank you, I was in front of the board last December about an issue that we were clear some that, they thought we didn't follow proper procedures, which we did. We was all done by Webby Engineering, which was conservation and the health department. Back in like May of '21, the town requested me to update the existing site plan, which we did and submitted by, I think, in October of '21. So nothing has changed since then. And the direction I got from the building inspector of the town was basically anybody going to go in to that rear building that's never been occupied, wouldn't use a special parameter, and do a amended site plan for their use.
Okay.
So when he came in front of you, whatever, a couple weeks ago, he was told that he needs like a master site plan. But I don't know how I can put them on, because if they're not allowed in there, then I would have the site plan for their use, and then somebody else coming in would require a different use. And the same thing for Kennedy. He's a little different. It seems like they put a fence at the back, so.
Yeah, and made some alterations of the study, which is not opposed in this.
Yeah, yeah, so no, no changes to the exterior. And what I'm trying to do is see if I can get the permit to go in, because we still have to do a structure on the inside, and I don't know if you could approve Kennedy's as well and have him hold that fence. I know he's contacted Webby Engineering again. So we cleared the back of the site with Webby's design and engineering and everything else, and we overcleared one section at the back. ConCon came out, talked to us, all that. We, so I think we're, I didn't even think we're in a buffer zone, to be honest with you, because the utility pool's left there, I got my injector pumps back there, I got my drainage left there, so they're all, and I was told where he's going to do his fence, that I could clear about another 100 feet beyond that, but that's where all my drainage goes. So I didn't know if he could pull that from his permit and just go through the proper process for that. I think he's already engaged Webby Engineering to, and sit down, get conservation, and then they've already done the block fence. The site is.
And just, just to quickly address that issue, I do believe if he was, if he was not proposing any changes from the outside, and it was a simple change of use inside of the building, then the site plan would not be required.
Okay.
As far as the October 21, October of '21, you mentioned that you provided a plan. Do you know, would that have been to conservation?
No.
That would have been to the planning board?
Yeah, so I don't know who in the town questioned. We weren't doing anything to the site. They just said, can you update the site plan because the one we have on file is back in 1997. So we weren't doing any changes. We submitted a plan, which is on file, and the, I was told that each person that phoned in that would need a site plan for their hand chat parking. I think with Kennedy, he came up for the floor traffic, lighting, I don't know what else came up, because any conversations, signage.
Are you open to this discussion?
I just have a couple more questions. So, um, if we have not, if we come across the plan.
We don't have any of any of that plan, and that's going in ConCon on the 23rd, I believe.
I don't know.
All right. So that would change by, that would change by decision or not, that you want from Tom?
I don't know. I was told you'd have to get, before I could do it right there.
All right. We have what time is scheduled to do another question.
It's not the full, it's not the full point, because this is, this is the lot, and they've cleared here, so, yeah, they're cleared over here, so we only have a site plan for here. We don't have any of this up here, and now they've cleared. Remember the problem, what we were talking about, and how they cleared, and we didn't know if the kennel can go there, or the fence you can throw there, because they cleared conservation, they haven't been there yet.
Okay.
So they need a full site plan, and it's not from your tenants or proposed tenants, it's from you that we need a complete.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding what a full site plan is.
The entire property, not just part of it.
Entire, entire 27 acres.
Yes, not just part of it.
That's the part I'm not sure on what detail you would require on the entire 27 acres.
I mean, not, so typically.
Because we only have until here.
Yeah, typically, we only go so far.
And this is cleared, and it's not in front of conservation yet, and they have flagged it.
So it wasn't for conservation.
Haven't gone, and I've been lost, and it's not.
The only reason I say that is because when I took a drive by the back of the building, it is all staked out, it's all, I agree with you 100%. There's hay bales out there, there's the, what do you call it? The screen, this soap fence and whatnot, and, but again, the only point was, Mr. Troop back in December 16th had asked you for a site plan for the, for the property, and that was from December, and then last week or the week before, the last meeting and the meeting before, it was just to complete the application, we need the site plan. But, and you were told, and I kind of actually reviewed the actual recording of the meeting, and you stood in front and said, I will get that to you. And that was December last year.
December 16th.
And here, December 16th, exactly. And here we are in September, and we still don't have that.
So my, my understanding of that request, number one, the site plan that I requested you, Webby, that's what he gave me, and when I do nothing on the, until you said we added a complete one to conservation, conservation has that, I will get you a copy. That's exactly what you said. I did.
Yeah.
See, and a whole, whole plan on the whole site.
We've, no, I've never done that footwork on our site.
And I don't know that one would ever have been required. So typically, even if there was a certain limit of work, I don't know that we would have required the detail of the entire.
It's a modification of site plan and.
But that detail is not something that we would require. But that's not, but that, so their clearing has nothing to do, right? His proposal for a use, he's asking us if he.
I agree. They're not including footprint.
What they cleared is a totally, is a totally different issue.
I disagree, because they're outing a area over here on the dock.
No, I'm, I'm talking to Mr. de Souza. Mr. de Souza's proposal is to use this building. Yes, so we have to determine use, and then once we determine use, we have to make sure that this provides the correct things for his proposed use.
We have to make.
So the clearing of the lot is irrelevant to his proposed use.
It's definitely parking lot, and there's more parking, and now they're.
So the parking is very important. We can't figure out if this site provides him the proper parking without an updated site plan. That's an issue. So in order for us to figure out if this site will provide you what's required, that's a definite. We would need an updated site plan of the parking. That's certain. But as far as the clearing and the detail, most likely would not be required more than 200 feet behind that building if there is no impact. If what you're proposing is not around that outside of the. If what you're proposing is not around that outside of the building, it's irrelevant to his.
My proposal for use, my understanding of this, sorry for the, my understanding of the site plan is what's on the site, not the woods and the 27 acres, that's not impacting anybody, not doing nothing there. This whole side that I cleared and all that, that plan is being sent in and approved by Conservation and the Health Department, with each field out back and a retention base.
Okay.
So that's, and again, it's not being paved, we didn't increase the paving or anything else like that. My understanding of, of the site plan and the parking requirements and everything else is he would do the site plan for his use and whatever number of cars or whatever calculation or whatever, whatever is required for him. And then, so like, for instance, we had a church in there, it's no longer there. They have 550 capacity, that was, that was their, that was their capacity, you know?
Yeah. So I agree where I think the plan has to reflect his use, and I do think that you have to approve that. That's, that's where, I think the board should sit. If his proposal is to use this building, we need the information about that. As far as what has been cleared, it's not, that's not the issue in front of us.
Well, I think that the last meeting, we knew was clearing taking place. You know, what we were told, I didn't know until we, it just had made mention that they only moved it back X number of feet, which was still acceptable as far as weapons protections and whatnot. And I thought it'd be something, I agree with Amy, that, okay, let's just see if it's part of the application we needed. There is no other way to calculate what exactly we need for parking and if it complies with whatnot and we'll have a full plan. And I, I was having difficulty, my personal feelings, I was having difficulty with September of, December 16th of last year, saying, yes, I'll get it to you and holding up these four people because I don't know the reason, and just fulfill the application requirements and that it would have been all set.
I think we're, maybe I misunderstood, but when Amy asked me, last time I was here, I gave you the plan that we had submitted. The whole reason I was brought up here is because he thought that I did it without going through the planning board. And, well, it was the courtesy of the media appointment, it wasn't me. And they were afraid I didn't have the proper permits for it.
No, it had nothing to do with the permits. It's sort of without.
It was, because I.
It was a matter of just having the application complete and have a whole set of plans. And you saying, after I watched the, the actual recording of the meeting on December 16th, I'll have it for you, no problem, and here we are, we still.
Well, when I was talking about the plan, what was missing on the plan was the service road that goes back to the tank that we had put in for the leach field. And that's what Amy wanted me to draw on the plan, which I drew on the plan and I dropped it off. I dropped it off. So I mean, my, my understanding is the site plan is what we submitted, and which was, that's what I got from Webby, I asked for a site plan, that's what he gave me. So I mean, do you want to see all 27 acres or, or what, what, what's different or what am I missing?
Just so I can be clear on what you're missing, I'd like to see what plan you submitted from Webby to us. Is it just the, the one for the kitchen, is that the latest one? We have one here. This is November 4th of '21. If you care to take a look, see.
That was the site plan he did, just to include some patios outside. But this is the site plan he did, showing all the paved surfaces. And then showing this, we have a more detailed version of it for Conservation and the Health Department, showing where they located the bleaching field.
Okay.
And then this was a different plan that was submitted, I don't think I even have a copy of that. For this little area, they would clear it in the back as well. But the pavement and all that stuff has not changed at all. So when, when, I'm talking about a site plan, this is where I'm thinking a site plan is. You know, I didn't think you'd need, I mean, this does probably show the site, but, I mean, I've never even walked a section actually. This is nothing back here, only woods and trees and weapons. And where he's, and where Kennedy's looking at putting the fences here. And like I said, I have the utility poles, I have drainage, I have tanks, my ejector pumps and everything else, so I didn't think that would be allowed in the weapon anyway. So I assumed that was even, not even in the buffer zone. So, and that's when I sent the Webby to make sure, he drew on the plan, but again, they're going down the road with the Conservation, see what else is required. So do you need a zoning opinion from the architect or something as far as the existing tenants and the existing calculations? As far as how many people for a restaurant or, because everybody's going to have a different, a different.
So that's part of the thing that we have to keep track of, is what was in there and has it changes to make sure that every time that there's a change of use, that the entire site still works and provides for whether or not it's a change. It's a lot easier when it's the same thing. So this particular one has gone from restaurant to restaurant. It doesn't require much of us to know that 25 years ago, served the restaurant fine. We don't really have to go through much. So I think that's part of the reason why maybe we never needed that detail before, is from restaurant to restaurant, no change of use. This building having, if it went for vacant, I consider that, then change of use, that's what I think we need a little bit more detail. And we'll have to have a discussion with the board to see how we feel as far as.
No, I'm hoping to get him to prove some of the parameters to do that one.
Wasn't that on the separate plan, it would be a hook to that building anyway?
Yeah, so we had the pipe going in there, we already got the pipe there, we already had the pipe there, and it goes down the water. Yeah, we already had the water in there, but I said I'm going to get it to public, he gets it in.
Sewer block, sewer block is in there.
Yeah, yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
So you're just talking, just renovating the building?
Yeah, so I got the toilets, I got the.
Yeah, no, I got you. You know, for you to say how much parking is required, what he can use, and he's going to be storing cars and stuff there or what's.
Is this an acceptable site plan or not?
No.
I believe we need more detail, especially around the building. How are the buildings going to be serviced, doors, entrance, what parking spots possibly could be designated for them?
I guess that's true.
I think he's already done that.
I guess that's true. It has to be the entire plan by the owner for your, not, it's not their responsibility, it's yours. It's the entire lot, it's rear lot dimensions, it's side lot dimensions, I'll read it.
But that does not necessarily include things like topography. That does not need to be addressed throughout the whole 27 acres.
It says, on the lot with side, front, rear dimensions, lot dimensions, topography, adjacent public ways, location of off-street parking, lighting, utility system, surface drainage, traffic room, location and nature of open spaces with specific notations as to landscaping, locusts plan and other details deemed necessary by the planning board. The planning board may waive or substantially reduce the site plan submission requirements for projects having limited or minor impacts consistent with the purposes of this chapter. You can't put in a plan with Conservation that doesn't go to every single board. You need to put in a site plan of your property so that we can get other boards and their notations on their laws that they watch for the town. And then we get those comments from other boards so that we can properly look at the site plan as a whole. And when, and that is not what we have.
It doesn't make any difference that it's all pre-existing and been.
What about Liddell on Home Street?
What about that?
It's the same thing, and we know it's not, because they changed the total topography.
Yeah, they did, but they haven't changed the total topography.
Yes, they have, they have cleared all the way back.
So they're all.
Yes, she did.
What I, what I would, what I would help, I think would really help is, you've worked with Webby in the past. You could reach out to them and ask them for an updated site plan.
That's what, that's what I did, and this is what I gave him.
This is an existing restaurant. Use one. So if you could just ask him, just using the card, because, you know what I mean? I think that, that's really where we're at.
Can I ask a question? If he asks Webby for an updated site plan, Webby brings us back this, then we got to bring this guy back in to have another conversation for us to argue with each other about what we really need. So don't you think it makes sense, before we send this poor guy back to Webby, to say exactly what to ask Webby for?
He needs to ask him for compliance.
Isn't that, that would make a little bit more sense, right?
The site plan I have, it's a, is this without it.
And he needs to store monitoring.
We're not going to need paving, we're not going to need crews in there.
What you did, you tore, you tore down trees all the way to the back of the lot on the left side, and that's why I wanted.
We've got some pre-existing perpias.
No, I mean, again, all this, all this change in.
We talked, was it car wash?
All the way towards the back of the lot.
For some reason.
With all trees and it's not, it's no longer there. And that changes the entire drainage of the property.
I've never seen that.
We didn't change any drains.
Doesn't it? Isn't that what happened at Home Street?
They totally changed the whole topography of the property. And they shed all the water right to the street, that was an issue because the water was chapped in the process.
And the same thing is happening here.
So, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is that if this gentleman clearly did not make this site plan at his house, he got this from an engineer. So rather than sending him back to ask for an updated site plan, and in fear of just getting exactly what he's telling us, that's what we have. So let's, let's be a little bit more specific with what to ask Webby for.
You need an updated site plan because you're proposing a change of use in this stuff. If you let the engineer know that you need an updated site plan, your intent is to propose a change of use in that building, then he can provide us with the information required.
Okay, and again, maybe it's my ignorance. What I was told is, we submitted the site plan that you guys requested. And then each tenant does their own, I'm sorry, one second. It's each tenant does their own site plan, because I can't do a site plan for every tenant that comes in, because it may not be last.
So this is kind of where I was getting at about the changes of use and things, where this, this is a, as far as I'm concerned, this site plan never had to address this building. Oh, you, right, so this building has never been used, so we don't actually have a site plan that shows us and provides the information required for a use of this building. So that's what we need. So as far as it goes, if this was never used, there may, you know, we see 107, 118 parking spots, none of those may be provided for that building. Because of the use of the others and the fact that if this was never used, that's why we need an updated site.
So when you did, when we had the people that are doing the soap bombs and stuff like that, which are in the front building, we didn't need a full site plan for that, we just needed a special permit for the change of use of there. So that was, so the difference is, this is an entirely different building, so therefore it needs the, the site plan needs to be updated to reflect that. To your point, you can't have to have, have to provide a new site plan for every tenant that goes in there, that wouldn't be fair, but
I don't think you have to.
I think you guys are having.
I think we're acting on this because I don't.
It's an entirely new building.
Yeah, so you see, you see the difference?
No, I understand, I think the site plan, I'm looking now, I can't see it on this one, because this is not the site plan that was provided. I think on Webby's one, he has a listing of the existing tenants with the parking counts for each one.
Yeah.
That's still.
So that information is something we certainly.
So this one here, like for instance, this area here, it had an occupancy of 550 people. Now they're gone, so we're not going to have a church back in there again.
But something else will go there.
Yeah, so we're not going to have as much parking requirement for that. So let's just say.
Well, so typically, the square footage and the occupancy is based off there, the occupancy is based off of the square footage, and then for the use, then the parking spots go off of the size of the building. So if this parking provides the appropriate parking for all of the square footage in this, regardless of use, we still don't know that it provides the parking for the square footage.
We're adding that.
Okay, that's, so, but you're right, where, once we have this all figured out, with everything taken into consideration, I don't think you have, you shouldn't have to come back, as you have not had to for other changes, you know what I mean? You've had other tenants that have switched, that we did not require this. The difference being an entire.
No, no, like you said, it would do one for one, right, the restaurant goes out, the restaurant comes in.
He's gay.
But Kennedy had to do one here, because he's a different use compared to the church, right?
And he's adding, and he's adding the fence area.
Well, he bought the fence for a second, he came back in with a site plan for his parking, right? Did you?
Yeah.
He just left.
But yeah.
I think, because I think, so, my understanding was, the site plan was all set. Each tenant would have to bring in their own modified site plan for their use, because if I put a, whatever, a, a, the garage goes in there, has one parking requirement. If something else goes in there, might have a greater or less parking requirement.
Yep.
So my understanding of it is go through the building department as well, as they do their own modified site plan for this. Now, I understand what you're saying about this here, as it's never been occupied before. I can go talk to Webby and see if I can put the parking counts. So if I put the parking counts on the existing plan, with the existing tenants in here, would that be acceptable?
You need to comply with 16728 as a whole, which is getting all of the different changes, which is topography, conservation, the whole nine yards.
For the entire site.
That's what, chapter 16728 is.
Shouldn't he have already, shouldn't he have, I know, I know, no, no, we don't need, that's everybody.
I don't believe that, because I think that, I think that, I think you can waive that.
Well, we certainly can.
Yes, you know what I mean, let's be ready.
So listen.
But he does.
Hold on, time out, time out.
Already passed.
That's what I was just about to say, so hang tight.
The drainage and all of that.
Not where all the septic systems are and everything.
So the septic system doesn't, doesn't affect the drainage. No, there's a huge difference there. So the septic system doesn't affect that. So this has already passed approval for the parking lot. We already know that, right? So that part, but as far as I see it, this, this building is a new use, and I would like a new updated plan that shows that this works for the use of that. And then realistically, like you're saying, now, once we have that, when this changes, even if, even if it changes from a three-power requirement to a five, we don't have to create a plan again.
That's right.
You know what I mean? So I think in a weird way too, yeah, so I think that that would also help both, both, both parties, if you know what I mean? The kennel and Mr. D'Souza, I think so.
Wouldn't that have had to have been provided already?
Get you what you need. So I go to Webby Engineering, I tell them I'll get through the calculations on this.
Not building.
And show the marketing for this.
Never.
Yeah, tell them you need a site plan, yeah.
Site plan for this, now.
No, a site plan for, for the whole entire property that shows the different clearing and everything, because there's different drainage now. And it's going to be.
Strongly disagree.
No, they've changed things, and they have a mechanic shop going in there that needs more parking, and then, and then there's also.
Okay, so we don't know that it needs more parking, because we have yet to figure out what parking is for what it's used to buy.
So you just get to add the square footage of that to the building and see how the parking space.
You can get a doctor's lead, so I don't have to be here next time.
There's not a lot of square footage in that building.
Me, chapter 16728. And this is a modification of the entire site. It's a modification of the entire site.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Yes, it is.
If he's proposing to use this, that's what we're focused on. Your proposal to us is to use this for a body shop, that's what I'm concerned with, that's what the board should be concerned with. I'm not concerned, nor should the board be with what trees you've cut down in the past.
As long, as long as.
I hope we're responsible.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
The changes that have been made have not gone through Conservation yet.
The changes, if we're talking about trees being cut, they're irrelevant?
The only ones that went through Conservation, because I've gone to the meetings, are the ones by the car wash, not the ones all the way in the back, and not the ones that have been being taken down over the last month and several weeks. It has not happened.
And the removal of trees does not affect.
It has not happened.
Or, or is proposed use. This is my suggestion to you, would be to have, talk to Webby, tell him that you're proposing a use here, you need enough.
You need to vote with the board for that, because that's not.
And let him-- He can't, you couldn't have cut down, in full, just for clarification from my point, so-- you can't cut down a bunch of trees and stuff without conservation's approval before you start chopping down trees, can you?
It happens all the time.
Well, I know you could, but did you, all right, let me, let me rephrase my question. Hold on, let me rephrase my question, Jesus.
Conservation is calling--
Did you go out and chop a bunch of trees down without talking to people first?
No.
Okay, so let's start there. So let's start--
Conservation is nobody, and you're supposed to be going through, and actually, on record, they told us that they were going to be flagging on the 15th, and that they had to do that, that was--
They already flagged that.
Sticks were rolled.
Yeah, they already flagged--
But conservation is supposed to be seeing this site in front of them in the future. In 16728.
The agreement of the board that we would like to see an updated site plan that--
Yes, but for the site.
And so, if that's clear enough, you know, just let him know that we need a site plan, and you are proposing a change of use. He'll know what to do.
My, my question was, and if I can just finish, before everybody jumps in-- before everybody jumps in, let me finish. If we knew that this was a project that they've applied for, and then they went out and started cutting down trees, I have a hard time believing that if they locked down that many trees, that somebody wouldn't have flagged that and come back and stopped them before they cut any more trees down without permission. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The area that we cleared, we had to clear it for our retention basin and our leach field, which is a hundred by--
Which was approved before we cleared it, before you cleared it. Okay, of course, right, that's, so I'm going somewhere with this, just let me finish. So now, there was a plan made, there was instructions given that were then followed through to continue the progression of his plan. So now, it has, whether it's changed drainage, or topography, whatever it is, it's different. But that was all approved, or told and discussed, mapped out and told which trees to cut down, which have been cleared now. Now we're trying to figure out which, a new site plan for that building to be used commercially.
Except for the--
So, but it's not like he chopped down a bunch of trees.
He did, over the last four weeks, he has been chopping down trees.
Without permission, though?
Yes.
Again--
Well, that's a, that's a big accusation, though.
No, yes, what's actually happening is that they actually have--
So that's my, that, well, that, that brings up a whole nother conversation, which is a whole nother conversation, but that's a conversation, conservation conversation, not a planning board conversation.
But it's also, it's also a site plan issue at this time, because they're trying to put a kennel on the land that they're clearing, and it's--
But that's different than what we're talking about now for the-- So hold on, so hold on, maybe I can clear this up. If we get this, if we get the site plan that you're, that you're suggesting, and in the meantime, we talk to conservation and say, what are your feelings on the clearing that they've done? And if conservation comes back and says, we're good with everything he's done, and then he brings us back a site plan that says, that's what that building is being used for, why can't we work together as a team and then get this solved?
I'd say that anyone who wanted to take it upon themselves, talk to them, conservation can. I believe that I've given him the best advice to get you what you need.
So-- I mean, if conservation came back and said, you cleared acres or hundreds of feet of trees without permission--
Had no impact on the state with that proposal.
But it would on the site plan, though.
Yes.
Well, we did our change, so the site plan's going to show what the site is, that's why we're asking for an updated--
It's still relevant to this building, if it wants to--
Yeah, for the footprint, for anything.
But it does, like, that's what your conversation on Home Street was, and--
This, this--
Different on this one.
This site plan--
On those properties, you are saying it's a big deal.
You are--
That it's a big deal, that they needed to install more management, all that, and then--
So this, so this site plan was approved originally before he changed the use of that building, and now he's trying to change the use of that building, so we need a site plan that proves what that building is updated by Webby. That's what we're saying. Your concern is conservation, though.
So when you go through this, it's all the woods, and everything has to come through, and that's when it all comes together, and we had the first--
Well, we're not approving it until--
So, so this is why, this is why I wanted this to occur in December. Is because it would prevent this, because it's not our fault, he didn't want to do that, and nobody wanted to do it. The chief of the plant, and so remember when Liddell took over, and it was like, this is the single thing. And it's not all together, which means, because the site plan comes, and then all of the other boards come, and that's why it's important that he follow all of 16728 and not part of it.
I think that if I haven't yet got the site plan that he's looking for, it's not a free vote, anything, it gives you time, I know, I know, I know--
I already know, because in the last meeting on Vettymake, they said that they still needed to flag, it still needs to go under conservation, I've been going to conservation meetings, and it hasn't come in yet.
So then, that needs to be brought-- So, pick your balance. No, what I mean by that is, not pick your balance. As far as the conversation of getting updated site plans that allows you to go to county and share, to just start checking boxes. You can do whatever you want, you can sit here and argue until you're blue in the face, it ain't gonna help. You know what I'm saying? This at least gives you time.
All right, so, so before, before everything got put on hold for the new site plan, I was told conservation, everything, right? And there was a deadline on like Monday to get in the application, but because I didn't know if we were still moving forward, my application was not in yet, because, and the weather scientist couldn't get there by then, so I'm going to miss that date. So I'm just trying to see, because I submitted, on the site plan I submitted, that I don't even think we really looked at that much. They added the tree line that actually shows, and we're not changing anything to the tree line, we're not digging back. It's already what's been cleared and already been approved, and it's not showing in a buffer zone. So I'm trying to see if I still actually have to go through conservation now, or what the next step for me is.
And that's what I'm saying.
So the last thing that I knew was that you were requesting the extension, right? Well, that was your, just on play, were you requesting the extension so you could deal with conservation? I was, I was requesting the extension because I was told that I should, because it keeps getting delayed. We canceled multiple meetings, people weren't here, and it just keeps getting pushed along, and so I'd like to move it forward as fast as I can, you know what I mean? Like, if I have to go through conservation, that's fine, I'll do it, I just want to know if that's at, like, that's actually the step.
So, I didn't see his site plan that Webby did from, so he did a site plan for his use.
The only thing that was requested, if I remember correctly, was from the building inspector. He needed to see a couple of handicap spaces.
Those were added, and I've added that--
And that's--
The lights, the tree line.
It was basically the same thing as what we were talking about.
Yeah.
You could comply with parking, that's all required for the space building out back.
Yep.
Could already be existed.
Yeah.
And the building inspector requested the handicap spaces, access and whatnot, which you already showed.
Yeah.
And, so that's basically along the same link, I think, that's the way I look at it.
But again, that just, you just see that he's going to contribute in order for the owner. Do you see this? That's why the site plan needs to be controlled.
Okay, so, the site plan, if you have-- if you have a commitment to conservation, I would definitely keep that, and I am not at liberty to-- Well, I'm not sure that I do, that's what I'm asking. How did you end up with conservation? Um, because before we looked at the updated site plan, it was suggested, and then, when, but it didn't even seem like we really looked at it. So I don't really know, because they were like, I'm not sure if you're in a buffer zone, so maybe talk to them. So I don't know, if conservation actually reached out and said, you need to come to us, which is--
There's a spot in here that says something about that. There's a correspondent from Caffey.
Could he get an approval, so file a requirement, to just walk inside and hold on the fenced area? I would have to instead of come back in front of you or conservation or whoever was--
As far as the dog thing goes, I would suggest, whatever ball you start rolling, or however you're dealing with conservation, if you show up at their meeting, and they, I would show up if you're required, and just maybe they'll tell you that you don't need anything. I don't know if that's the way--
I think you'd be better off checking that box, even if it's not needed, than have, I'd rather, you'd rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it, you know what I'm saying?
Can I go to the next meeting, my application isn't, and just to talk to them and ask that?
Yeah, and then it's on record, and then just ask them to send us a note, to say, he sat, he stood before us, and positioned his situation, and--
On video.
We, we don't feel as though, you know, yeah. The last thing, well, the last thing I'm trying to, is fill up a business from starting and getting in, getting in the town to make a bit of money. You know what I mean? Messing with your livelihood, which isn't cool, because--
Yeah, I know what they're saying, I think I will have to do what they're asking me, because I don't know what's on, what's allowed for this building. So I think I will have to go to Webby on that, and just see what that is, if the parking requirement, you should add that into the calculation, right? And see what it is. And again, I don't want to beat a dead horse. If, if he, could he go in front of conservation and still get approval on this, this would not be approved.
You need the whole site plan for the conservation.
So, if--
If we allow this to happen here, we allow this to happen all over town, you have to have a whole site plan that goes in front, from the owner, so that he can then rent out his spaces, it's not the individual tenants that need to do this.
This is just an update, so it's already, I mean, I remember when Choppa's mom was there, right? But as far as like this being, having a site plan, that's, it's already passed that.
It's a modification.
These are updates, as things change. As far as getting approval for the--
Another reason I'm asking is that I still have to do the construction inside for him, so if he's going to be delayed another two months, you know. Here, I don't know how long this can be delayed, if they do have to bring in front of conservation, I don't know, what's the, what's the timeframe?
To see conservation, when are you supposed to be in front of conservation?
I just know when the next meeting is, I have, they haven't actually talked to me.
So I just, I don't know how we can get that, we're going to have to go to the discussion services, get that going, and then this could be sorted out at a later date.
So, if the only issue holding up the dog kennel was conservation because of proposal, he could propose to withdraw that and go forward with, with everything else.
Do you want to do that? Right, is that something I said, do again, or is it, do it now, and just, you guys strike it off?
No reason why we couldn't approve that now without the kennel, you know, without the outdoor fence area, he just deals with that later.
Who is going to take the dogs? And then what about the going around the building and all of the traffic that's--
You already submitted a plan with that.
Yeah, so I would say that he would have to, to come in and--
Guys, we need a whole thing of 16728. If he had just done it, then we wouldn't be going through this now, which is the point in December. He shouldn't be going through conservation for the owner of the property. The property has to be put under a modification of site plan, so that we then cannot do this, because this is really ridiculous. This is really ridiculous.
We agree if we had a full site plan in December, it would be better, but we're still trying to help the guy right now.
Well, what we need to do is have the owner--
That's what I asked you, and that's what you gave me, I swear. I mean, it's, it's, so, so the only one that I remember that Amy wasn't happy with was, the road wasn't drawn here, and I drew that, and I dropped it off the road.
You told me it wasn't a road.
It's not a road, it's, it's a gravel pathway, it's a service road. How am I going to, how am I going to clean the bumps, clean the bank?
They need a site plan, a full site plan, so that we can then have the tenants be able to come here and have their option to rent from you, and it's really that easy, just bring the site plan, send it to all the boards, so that you can rent these properties out, and then it'll be pretty easy.
During the video of the December 16th meeting, it was agreed by the board that he would draw the gravel--
I did.
Gravel, a service road, it's not a, it's not a cut through or--
No, but I don't know.
Usable road, it's other than, this is a service road. And you have to go to conservation in order to put the road in period, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't go to any, to be honest, I do. Webby does it, and he gives me what I need, and he does it, that's what I do. And he tries it out and says, do this, do this, and do that.
Just comply with 16728, and then the tenants can move in, and you won't have these issues.
So that's my recommendation, it doesn't change.
Okay, all right, okay, I do that.
Cool.
Thank you.
Okay, 725. See you later.
I have a letter from the engineer.
So we're just asking for continued extension on the temporary--
Because you want every month to come in, so--
I was able to meet again last week, we should have something--
Damn. Oh, sorry, 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 I haven't gotten to it yet, okay.
Um, we should have something more concrete within the next 60 days or so. I don't know if you do 60, or if you want us to do 30, 20.
Do you have any updates from Mesa?
He left his email, if you'd like to, he just started picking it back up again.
He's, he's with Mesa and then OXPO, which is the turtle people that, for us, retired OXPO associates, so they have been, been working with GPS and all that. Never end this form, right? It's not like--
This is what they did--
What is it, like, formally called, just so that I know? Is that Mesa?
No, 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 OXPO associates, a company that you hire to help you go through the Mesa process.
Thank you. Is it like--
The turtle process.
Well, I understand why you would call it that, I understand completely. Is it OXPO?
Aggravation.
Is it OXPO?
Oh, yeah, O, the W at the end.
Oh, okay, wait.
OX, and then O.
Can we have something in writing from those places on where you're, in the next 30, like, so can you come back in October and with, like, updates about those certain things?
She already has stuff from OXPO she can send us.
Oh, that would be awesome.
I mean, I--
We just said bring me, we don't have to come back in three years, it's, it was a Wheatonwood, if you want.
That's fine, yeah.
I don't mind seeing you every day, but--
I'm sitting around with--
Well, I know, I'm eating, move on. I know, this is fun.
I was gonna say, be glad you only have to come once a month, that's what I was told.
Last time they came from the board was a, was a 90-day, well, no, it was a 30-day--
No, Amy wanted 30 days, which is fine.
Why take it a 90-day, and then--
I mean, we can just--
I keep coming back, because if it gets settled, in the meantime, within the 90 days, I'm sure it will be back.
Because the property's in Halifax, England, so, how it works, you have to give up land to use land, because it's a national heritage. So they have a process of three to one, and it's not easy, because it's going back and forth, and you have to get a land trust to take the land. They take your land, and they don't get the money for it, you have to give it to a-- They give it, they can actually take your land, and you have to give it to a trust or--
Which is fine, but as I--
I know, but it's like-- They want to know what we're going through, it's a lot, it's a lot. It's not easy, you know, they work like--
Is the Town of Plinton involved in this at all? Do you have to go in front of the Town of Plinton at all, as well?
We haven't did anything over there yet, so--
I didn't know if like you were in any processes over there or anything.
No, we're still doing the same thing with you, we have to--
We, you can't piece, so, some properties, they say, okay, like, the man that was just here, he'd never used that building. Let's just say it wasn't even there, and he, it's like piecing it. You can't do that when you have--
They want the whole project.
National heritage is involved. You have to have everything, like, to a T, that's why it takes so long, because things change, you get different ideas and--
If you want to use 20 acres, they don't want, they want to see what the whole, the whole project, you know, so it's--
Yeah, well, that's--
But as I said before, we should certainly send it to--
Don't get her started on the whole plan.
Yeah, yeah, so I can send it to--
You can see, whatever, you want to see it, it's--
Yeah, I don't want to think of going on.
We have the front company.
And I will do that, because I know you don't.
Is there anything, is there any reason why we can't give them a 90-day?
I believe we're both have a motion.
Yeah. I'll make a motion and to grant the petition a 90-day extension. Agreeable with the petition.
Thank you.
Agreed.
And we can do the paperwork then. And again, in the meantime...
We don't mind bringing paperwork, we're going to show you when we move forward as quickly as possible.
Make a complaint before the board and then we, they're all happy.
All right.
Second.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
I don't like to show her, but no, you're fine.
Thank you, have a good night. I didn't have a...
You need to sign that.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, do we vote, aye?
How do you get this signed?
Aye. Well, I seconded it, I figured.
I don't know, maybe I didn't, but I didn't get it seconded.
You hear my voice in your head. It's time to go.
Sometimes you sign this so you get a chance to before we go. And just for the record, it's O-B-O-W.
O, oh, hey, thank you. Thank you very much.
Sheldon, great job.
Oh, you signed on the applicant side.
Just drawing an arrow.
All right, no.
I'll sign it.
Hey, you got any please?
Rebecca.
I know you look familiar, isn't it? I think I've seen you before. I went, Len, so...
Here to combine, one to... This is then before you, before this board. In different configurations of the time. We have our frontage, we have our 150 feet at a second, our circle, we have our sheet.
This is, this is, uh, for what?
It's all right.
That's the, uh...
It is, listed. It will be raised. There's questions at one point in time, on another moment. Here it will be. 66 plus 114. 114. 66 plus 114, that's what I'm going to do, I'm just not going to show. The other end, that's correct. 119, 66, 97, 180. 180.91.
Hear that?
What's with frontage? As opposed to 1, 2, 3 lots. And reconfiguring this one to be not one of the lots. Do you need that? 20 feet plus, uh, I didn't understand it, but I could...
Why is that not here? Our board? I don't have that in, uh...
I'm sorry?
I don't have that, this.
No.
I don't know, just... There it is.
Any number of places. What do you need to add?
Was this one, um, we had the company that flew in from like Cleveland to propose a self-storage.
Correct.
And we were, he was, he was told...
That was, yeah, so this right here is just the A and R, so approval not required through subdivision control is what an A and R is?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so that's this at this point in time. And then the next thing that would be on a tour.
Six, yep.
But this would be a totally separate thing.
Right.
Any questions?
I'm certain due to the formative process, so basically just the idea.
I can write you that.
Oh, there's nothing, no? Okay. So, this is putting storage building where the other people will hold it?
This is just an A and R.
This is just reconfiguring the lots, sort of the lots.
I'm taking five lots and then two, then to suit a potential future...
Those are the blinders she was talking about.
The most impressive thing is the circles. Okay, fine.
It's kind of late in the morning, we should have to be running here.
I don't want to cross that.
Do we have any comments from the public?
I'm just thinking, Charlie.
Five lots into two. Could you show me the five lots? One, two, three.
Three, four, five. This is the, so there was a parcel in the back, parcel in front, parcel in front. And again, it was something that we did to support previous attempts at development that this is better suited to.
Oh, wait, your client doesn't...
I'm supposed to represent the client, so I speak for him.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just kidding.
No, it's okay.
This very apartment was flagged. And you need a snorkel chance to go through there. We actually found a, which didn't appear on any of the previous maps that I've seen. There was an actual drainage pipe that came from Hobbitwood, it might be over here, but it came from there. Okay, came, came into the back here, so, okay, where did this come from? It's not on any map, it just...
So, we, we tried to address that.
The alleys just get flooded. And actually, the highway department actually had a call because the alleys were getting flooded from all of the new subject systems. This has nothing to do with this.
I know, I know, it's not that.
And it's like, and it was coming in the pipe and like waves down the driveway. The other day.
Is there something that you're looking for? Just all of us?
Me?
No, just in general.
Just kidding, everyone's done.
Something about that, that sentence at the top, approval not required, sounds like something that you say to somebody when you don't care what they think.
Well, it doesn't, so...
Exactly.
It doesn't make them buildable.
If you guys would mind explaining, I'm going to, you guys, so, you know, I know this front setback, side setbacks, but not in the whole circle. So, if it's a front setback...
Some kind of set it at an angle that you can't leave the road, um, I think that's, it's another way to protect the shape factor that we already have. So, that way you couldn't have 150 feet of frontage, jut this out over at an angle like this and then...
If this was the circle where the building could possibly go, is this a, there's going to be a front setback, I would imagine.
Yeah, 50 feet off the front.
Which is amazing to me that that's all that is. Who came up with that?
You could have these odd shaped lots. Not an example in another town that we had. It had an access road like this, right?
It's crazy.
You know, actually, yeah, pretty simple, right? So, you have a house here that has their access over here, and then you have two houses here that have their access over here. So, these two people wanted to put fences, come to find out, this guy put his fence and it cut off the front lawn of the other two people because your frontage was no longer anywhere near the front of your house. So, your house faced the road, everything looked good.
So, there was no requirements per se of, of at least, you know, 50-foot setback. As long as you have frontage there, as soon as you hit the 50 feet, you can, you can...
It's not basically necessary to put in that circle.
And by doing an approval not required, it doesn't make it a buildable lot?
And it says it.
Yeah, no, we don't, yep.
It says it, not zoning, this isn't a zoning determination, this is just...
Just a reconfiguration of a lot. Nothing's changed.
Can, I know what was brought up once before, can I ask, is it...
Anything.
How much different is this one from the previous one?
Going from five lots to two lots.
This is why I showed you quite a lot here. So, I had one on here.
Oh, I see, because you, now, this...
I'm showing you what the previous one was underneath, so you can kind of see where it changed. Which is why I'm showing the dash line, illustrate this was a lot, this was, this was, this down here was, and then it's all this. So, you're seeing...
Basically, you're getting frontage right here too. How come you didn't go back here? Like, how come you...
Can I use the blinders right now?
No, I'm just, no, I'm just asking you on this, I know it doesn't matter, I'm just asking you why.
It has to do with the future potential that's coming forward.
I don't like a sign line type of... I just have a lot of questions, aren't I?
All right.
You can't not do it.
Any other questions? I understand the motion. I will make a motion to approve the A and R plan. Paid for RJ LLC.
Your hand's in the way.
83022. Do I have a second?
You have to.
All those?
In favor? Aye.
Favor? Aye.
There's really nothing we can do.
Yeah, right.
Why didn't either one of you choose to second?
I don't know enough, I don't know enough of the situation. Um, I don't know enough of the, yeah. I don't know, yeah. We wanted Rick to do something tonight? No, I didn't have, no.
That was actually it.
No, yeah, right, no. So, on, to answer your question, for the sake of having blinders on, I don't want, I want to make sure that I gather as much information as possible, especially for the next meeting or whenever the next proposed thing is. So, rather than just jumping on and throwing my name on something, I'd rather...
So, on the new bar, you're here, do I get this tonight?
Yeah. She, she does, I'm allowed, yeah.
Do we have copies to pass around and whatnot?
Um, everything is in the folder.
Okay.
So, if it's, if there's nothing that you can, if it's approval not required, why do we even have to take a vote?
So, then we have it on record that it's changed. I mean, especially like tax purposes, things like that, freight and eliminating lots.
Town Hall takes it, makes sense.
No, it shows that we have a proper...
I just feel like when you say aye to something, you're, you're putting your name on something that you're approving.
I agree, that's one way to put it.
Right. Yeah, I only did a couple. We should have did that one.
Yeah, they kind of look the same, but you can see the front, it should be...
You got that one already. Very good.
You have babies.
Very good. Yeah, sleeping through the night. Yeah, two-year-old and a four-month-old. Yeah. Oh, yeah? We did this sleep training called Baby Wise, and my, our friends did it. All three of their girls were sleeping by eight weeks. So, we did it, and our first ones were sleeping by eight weeks. It certainly helps. Yes. I want to do it. No, I want, no. That was a joke. That was a joke. Today is the 15th, wow.
I can't wait till next summer.
Oh, that's depressing. That was very sad. Don't smudge the ink.
Yeah, post-it note over it.
See, I contributed to your, to your quest.
Do I get one of those two or just this?
I was only going to give you that one.
You have to record that.
Well, I understand that.
Oh, you would know that, sorry.
We sometimes scan a paper copy, that's why I'm only asking you.
Oh, yeah, I'm all good for that.
You do?
Thank you. Thank you.
And I have, I don't entertain any motion, but we're here. So... All those.
Aye.
Aye.